Wednesday afternoon, hump day. I'm grateful for your viewership and listenership of our flagship program, The I Love Seville Show. We're in downtown Charlottesville, smack dab in the middle of everything. Goodness gracious, smack dab in the middle of what may have been an ark that just floated down Market Street with a couple of pigeons and a couple of parrots and a couple of parakeets and a couple of chimpanzees hanging over the edge with a man with a cane and a long shaggy white beard at the helm of the ark. So many things you see here in downtown Charlottesville. A lot I want to cover on the program. I'm going to ask you this question. In your memory bank, if you can tap into your memory bank, can you remember a topic or a turn of events that has been more divisive locally in this community, specifically between the University of Virginia and Charlottesville City Schools than this Federal Executive Institute? Tomorrow, teachers, school employees, school supporters, parents will be parking illegally at Barracks Road Shopping Center as they head to Emmett Street to protest the University of Virginia's soon to be acquisition. It's not an acquisition. It's a hand me down gift from the federal government. They'll call it an acquisition. But they'll protest UVA getting the Federal Executive Institute. And I've been really thinking today, over my time in Charlottesville, and I can't really think of something that has been this, I guess divisive is the right word, amongst city public schools and the University of Virginia. I'd ask you to help me come up with that answer, because I think this is it. I mean, you have flyers, I have one in my person, they're circulating online, that are, I mean, would you say strongly worded? Would you say slanderous? "UVA steals from children" is what the flyers say. I mean, how do you say liable? I mean, how would you characterize that copyrighting on that flyer? Indivisible Charlottesville is hosting a protest Thursday afternoon in front of the Federal Executive Institute. On that flyer, it's encouraging all the protesters to park at Barracks Road Shopping Center. If you're against this protest, wouldn't you notify Federal Realty, the owner of Barracks Road Shopping Center, a publicly traded company that owns the parking lot, private parking lot, to tow anyone that's parking in this parking lot illegally? If they're going to protest tomorrow because of the Federal Executive Institute at 5:30 PM tomorrow afternoon, and you see a couple of hundred cars coming at the same time to park, wouldn't you, if you're Barracks Road and Federal Realty, just have some tow trucks on hand and get them out of there? I want to talk about more respond and reaction, more responsive reaction to the FEI hot potato. I said in my analysis yesterday that would Donald Trump steal the spotlight, Judah, with a ribbon cutting ceremony?
I mean, that would certainly get people riled.
I said literally last week, Donald Trump is giving in hand me down fashion, like our oldest son is hand me downing his hoodies, his socks and his tighty whities to his little brother, our youngest son. The federal government is hand me downing the Federal Executive Institute to the University of Virginia. First, it was going to go to city schools. I said last week, will Donald Trump insist on a red carpet rollout and a ribbon cutting ceremony? And I said last week, is Donald Trump going to end up stealing the spotlight? Well, the ribbon cutting ceremony hasn't happened yet, but certainly the spotlight is in Donald Trump's hands right now. And now the activists, the supporters, the evangelists, the indivisible Charlottesville group, the livable Charlottesville group, the teachers' union is papering the town with flyers that is basically saying the University of Virginia is stealing from kids, stealing from children. We'll talk about that today. I'm going to ask you on today's program, is the Charlottesville School Board and the Charlottesville Teachers Union, are they adversaries? Are they frenemies, friends that are enemies? Frenemies or are they straight up adversaries? Because the teachers' union, some in the teachers' union, including the president, are straight up calling out the elected officials in the school board. So I want to respond and react to that on today's program. On today's show, I want to talk, ladies and gentlemen, of some data that was provided to us by... How would you characterize yourself, Deep Throat? Would you characterize yourself as a statistician? A data, I mean, what adjective would you use to, a data investigator, an investigator of stats of data? I mean, how would you characterize him, Judah, and his skillset of undercovering data through investigation? He spent today-
A data deep diver?
A data, Deep Throat is a data deep diver? I like that, Judah. Deep Throat is a data deep diver. He spent today, a good portion of his morning uncovering some data from Charlottesville Public Schools. And the data he's uncovered, and you got the charts that he has, right, Judah?
Yeah.
We're going to relay those charts to you. Roughly 70%, 70% of Charlottesville City School employees live in the city of Charlottesville or Almarle County, according to the data and the corresponding charts that we will show. In fact, show the first chart so we can whet the appetite of the viewers and listeners. Well, welcome to the program, the daily progress, two TV stations, radio station, and now I've noticed the newspaper from Richmond's been watching the program. The first chart is the one that you and I were using to try to come up with the 70% number. You have that on screen?
Yep.
This is data provided by Deep Throat. I'll let you know later in the program how he got this data. Home addresses of Seville City School employees. The blue line is Almarle County addresses. The red line is Charlottesville City addresses. Overwhelmingly, ladies and gentlemen, overwhelmingly, the school employees live in Almarle County and the city of Charlottesville. And as he highlighted in his analysis to me, the narrative amongst activists, amongst the teacher union, and amongst elected officials is the areas become so expensive, which it has, that frontline workers, which, you know, could be teachers, could be retail, food and beverage, could be nurses, fire and rescue police, cannot afford to live in the city they serve or in the neighboring Almarle County. But the data says otherwise, ladies and gentlemen. And we will relay that investigation to you courtesy of Deep Throat and his data deep dive on the Wednesday, May 14th edition of The I Love Seville Show. I also going to ask you the question. Last week, we did a pretty thorough analysis of the Old Ivy Residence. That's a 525 unit project that's coming on Old Ivy Road and the bypass. And I also relayed to you the project that's coming next to Scott Stadium, 1,300 plus beds next to, on Stadium Road. Then we also talked about the project that's coming next to Mo's Barbecue. I want to ask you, the viewer and listener, if you had your druthers, where would you prefer to live? The Old Ivy Residences, done by international developer Gray Star, the Verve, done by national developer Subtax, or Bloom, done by national developer Up Campus Student Living next to Mo's, which is 231 units and 641 beds. We'll talk about that on today's show. And I also want to talk about the University of Virginia, a Cavalier Daily story that's out today, that the University of Virginia has lost 60 plus million dollars. Crazy number. 60 million plus in federal research cuts. I'm going to put some context on this and give it some firsthand perspective. And I've done this briefly in past shows. A tenant which shall remain nameless, a biotechnology tenant which shall remain nameless, got significantly behind on rent, to the point that locks had to be changed. And to the point where biotechnology equipment valued well over hundreds of, you know, $100,000 of equipment was repossessed. And then we had to not only get approval from a court about repossessing the biotechnology equipment. The first thing we did was change the locks. Then we got clearance that we could repo the biotechnology equipment to then sell it in the aftermarket to recoup some of our lease losses because of back rent. And much of last year, I was doing a great job of selling this biotechnology equipment. I mean, I'm talking 50, $60,000 in biotechnology equipment went in a matter of weeks, thanks to relationships and connections we have at the University of Virginia. And then, folks, crickets in the first quarter of this year, as Trump is slashing funding. And now an article in the Cavalier Daily highlights the impact of slash funding, which we'll talk about on today's show. A lot I want to cover, and before I talk Charlottesville Sanitary Supply, Judah, and Charlottesville Business Brokers, before we get there, I just want to take a moment to highlight how precious life is. Yesterday, there was a 12-year-old little boy who was near Crozay, near Greenwood, doing what 12-year-old little boys do. He was walking next to a creek. And that 12-year-old little boy got caught up in a flash flood. We all saw what happened yesterday. The aggressive nature of rain, the torrential nature of what happened yesterday. And this 12-year-old little boy next to a creek was washed away. Immediately, fire and rescue personnel from many different jurisdictions executed a three, three and a half hour hunt for the 12-year-old little boy. They had to stop the hunt because of darkness and because some of the rescue personnel were actually risking their lives hunting for this little boy. It was that dangerous out there. And certain aspects or certain parts of Almarle County in central Virginia. The hunt started again today. The body of the 12-year-old little boy has been found. Unfortunately, he is no longer with us. As a parent of two little boys, it is saddening, overwhelmingly saddening, to think of what his parents are going through. A wise person once told me that... A wise person once told me that having children is like having your heart walking outside of your body every single day. And as you see your children in good times and great times and bad times and sad times, you feel their emotion and what they're experiencing in real time yourself. It's your heart walking outside your body. And I just cannot imagine what the parents are going through. Prayers are with these, the parents and the family. And it again puts in perspective how precious and vulnerable life is. All right, there is a show to do. I want to give some gratitude and some attention to not only the rescue personnel that did find the little boy's body this morning, but also to one of our partners that make the show really hum, and that Charlottesville Sanitary Supply. I've seen the second generation owner of Charlottesville Sanitary Supply, John Vermillion, interact with his two sons, Andrew and his brother, at Charlottesville Sanitary Supply. His two sons are the third generation owners of Charlottesville Sanitary Supply. And I've watched John, the second generation owner, absolute beam with pride when watching his two sons run a business that his parents started 60-plus years ago. Three generations strong, father and two sons running the business right now. East High Street and online at charlottesvillesanitariesupply.com. The Vermillions are classy, honest, communicative, knowledgeable, kind people and business owners. Charlottesville Sanitary Supply. Well, weave Judah in on a, first the studio camera, then a two-shot as you offer the lead headline of today's show, Judah Whitkower. Let's unpack it and let's rock and roll as Noah's Ark looks like it may be docking right now with the rain finally stopping. The lead headline, Judah, on screen, and then you set the table, my friend.
Let's see. Our city school board and teachers' union adversaries.
I think this is a good question. This is why I think this is a good question. You saw the messaging as it applied to losing the Federal Executive Institute on Emmett Street. The messaging was, it was such a stark contrast with how the messaging was delivered. The school board and its chair, Emily Dooley, said, "We will not fight the loss of the Federal Executive Institute."
Yeah.
Prior to that message to media from Emily Dooley of the Charlottesville School Board, you had the president of the teacher union, the Education Association, saying that "we are going to fight this loss by no longer agreeing to host UVA students in our classrooms as they log the necessary hours to get a degree from the University of Virginia." So, over the weekend, the president of the Teachers' Education, Shannon Gilligan, says, "Hell yeah, we're going to fight. And our only point of leverage is saying no to the students that come to our classrooms from UVA. They're not welcome anymore." And then other teachers responded to that initial effort from the president of the teachers' union, saying, "We're on board. We're sending emails to UVA right now that we're canceling any agreement that we have for the following semester."
Yeah.
That's happening. Then, right after that, the school board says, "We're not going to fight." Then, right after the school board tells the media, "We're not going to fight UVA", the teacher union, in conjunction with activists in indivisible Charlottesville, is hosting a protest and is papering the town with flyers digitally and physically-
I've got the flyer if you want me to put it-
Put the flyer on screen. You guys have seen this flyer by now, haven't you? Is it on screen?
"UVA steals from children."
Look at the screen, viewers and listeners. Here's the flyer. "UVA steals from children."
Yep.
From the teachers' union and activists in this community, including the activist policy group indivisible Charlottesville. Furthermore, a protest is being held yesterday, having a protest within 24 hours of UVA graduation, as tens of thousands of people come into town tomorrow, because when you come into town for graduation, you have to commit to Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night hotel rooms. You're just not coming in for a one-night stay in a hotel room. They actually make you stay Thursday night, Friday night, and Saturday night in your hotel room. Some of them even make you commit to a Sunday night hotel stay. So, these folks are doing a protest in the gateway to the University of Virginia, on the entry, on the first day of UVA graduation, with tens of thousands of people arriving to Charlottesville, parrots, to cherish, celebrate their son or daughter graduating from Thomas Jefferson's University. And one of the primary gateways of entry to Charlottesville for graduation is right down Emmett Street.
Yep.
Right by the Federal Executive Institute. So tomorrow at 5:30 PM, put that flyer back on screen. You're going to have hundreds of people, and let me look at the weather forecast for tomorrow. No rain in the forecast.
Really?
You're going to have hundreds of people outside the Federal Executive Institute with poster signs saying "FU UVA" or "UVA steals from children", as fourth-year parents drive right by them and look out the window with no true context with what's going on.
Yeah.
The parents that are coming here will not understand the protest, but they will see a sign that says "UVA steals from children." It has me asking the question, what is the dynamic between the elected officials, the school board, who allocate the money to the city and its public schools, who allocate the money to the city public schools, and the teachers' union? It seems much more adversarial than anyone would have ever thought.
I mean, they certainly put on a good face when it all began.
Who's that?
The city schools and the teachers' unions. I mean, when, what was it, when the school board first voted to approve the talks and-
The application?
And, no, no, when they first approved the teachers' union.
Oh, you're talking about work and negotiating with the teachers' union? You're basically talking about negotiating with the union, right?
I mean, they all seemed on one, they all seemed together on it.
But they seem so far apart right now.
Right now, yeah.
So far apart.
It may just be a fact of, you know, diverging desires.
I want you to consider what's going to happen tomorrow at 5:30 PM. As thousands of parents come into Charlottesville, they drive by a protest site where a teachers' union and activists in Charlottesville are going to be holding billboards up in air as BMWs, as Expeditions, as Navigators, as Lexus, as Mercedes-Benz, as Forerunners, as Bentleys roll down Emmett Street. And they look out the window and they see signs that say "UVA steals from children." The activists that are going to be protesting literally have on their flyer, which Judah can put back on screen, it says, "Park in Barracks Road." Barracks Road literally can tow you. This is Federal Realty owned parking lot. They tow for people that are parking there on game day. If you park there on game day, you get towed from Barracks Road. Will you get towed if you parked on protest day? Will protest day get more people to turn out than a football game at Scott Stadium? That's tongue in cheek right there. It leads me to ask the question. The school board and the teachers' union, look at the riff or the lightning rod this issue has caused. It's caused a gap in ideology or approach. This leads me to my next headline, if you can put on screen. Can someone think of a turn of events historically that is more divisive with the University of Virginia and city public schools than this? Look, there's been plenty of beef and lightning rod issues between the University of Virginia and Charlottesville City as a whole. August 11th and August 12th, and how that was managed by Teresa Sullivan. August 11th and August 12th, and how that was managed by elected officials, how that was managed by the governor of Virginia at the time. That caused serious beef, August 11th and August 12th. The statues, although that wasn't tied to UVA. But I'm talking specifically city public schools and the University of Virginia. City public schools and the University of Virginia. I've been here 25 years. I cannot think of a single historical turn of events that has caused more beef between city schools and the University of Virginia than this Federal Executive Institute. And the conspiracy theorist in me says, is this Donald Trump playing chess when everyone else is playing checkers? His administration gives it to the public schools first, then his administration takes it away from the public schools, then his administration gives it to UVA. Deep Throat, one of Deep Throat's family members made this point over the weekend. If UVA had gotten the Federal Executive Institute from day one, that would have caused beef. But that would have caused a lot less beef than giving the Federal Executive Institute to city schools first, and then taking it from city schools and giving it to UVA. It's made UVA the villain. It's the unintentional villain in the movie or the comic book. UVA's been made the unintentional villain by Donald Trump. And Donald Trump, we know for a fact that the University of Virginia isn't Trump's crossfire because of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We know Charlottesville City Schools isn't Donald Trump's crossfire because of a number of reasons. Is the man so forward-thinking, so chess versus checkers-playing, that he was able to concoct a steal-the-moment, red carpet, ribbon-cutting metaphorical rollout? By giving it to city schools, taking it from city schools, and giving it to UVA, only then to watch from the White House as the University of Virginia and city schools are now fighting each other, literally, physically, proverbially, metaphorically, in protest fashion during graduation weekend? The day thousands of parents drive their Mercedes-Benz down Barracks Road Shopping Center, look out their window and see signs that says "UVA steals from children"?
Certainly a compelling theory.
Trump could not have made, look at what he's done!
What's the end goal, though?
What's the end goal? What is the end goal? Is the end goal-
Is it just to destabilize both of these institutions?
This was an interesting comment that was left by Andrew Baxter on the I Love Seville Network yesterday. Let me see if I can find that comment yesterday by Andrew Baxter. I thought it was very, very good. It was on LinkedIn. Andrew Baxter is a man that I respect tremendously. I'm going to relay that comment to you in approximately 15 seconds. I just got to find it. Our LinkedIn platform is really booming of late. Our LinkedIn platform on yesterday's show had 538 viewers just on that one platform. This is what Andrew Baxter said. And he's talking about the Federal Executive Institute, how in February it was up and running. By the end of February, in fact, Sean Tubbs has got a great timeline. Let me read Sean Tubbs' timeline of what happened, and then I'll get to Andrew Baxter's comment. This is bananas, what's happened here. First, give some credit to Shawnee Tubbs for this timeline of the FEI building. He says, "On February 10th, 2025, Donald Trump entered the organization, the FEI organization, February 10th with an executive order. By February 28th, 18 days later, the Federal Executive Institute was shuttered. 14 acres and 90,000 plus square feet of former hotel. On April 29th, a month later, Trump's administration had sent a letter to city schools, April 29th, saying they got the building. On May 9th, a second letter goes out saying, 'Oh, my bad.' We're doing some, is the phrase "Indian giving" still allowed? Or is that not the perfei nomenclature?
You mean, is it?
All right.
I mean, it's questionable.
Okay, we're going to take it, we're going to take it out of the lexicon.
I don't think it's malicious.
All right. The Trump administration on May 9th sent a second letter to city schools, said, "Sorry, we gave this to you, but no, we're taking it back. You're not getting it. In fact, we're going to give it to UVA." That's on May 9th. UVA then issues a statement saying, "We had no idea we were going to get this." UVA then tries to cover its ass and say, "We tried to do a joint statement with the city schools to try to get it. Then we found out that joint applications were not allowed. And when joint applications were not allowed, we filled out our own application. And when we filled out our own application and we found out initially we lost, we just said, 'Congratulations, city schools, you won.' And now they're giving it to us and we're the unintentional villain."
They reached out to the government for clarification, like, "Hey, what's going on?"
Yeah.
Like, are you guys, is somebody having an aneurysm over there? And like, just sending out letters willy-nilly?
So, from February 10th, ladies and gentlemen, when Trump entered the organization with an executive order, until May 9th, we're talking March, three months. we're talking March 8th, three months, this institute went from shuttered, went from active to shuttered, to city schools, to UVA, in 90 days. This is Andrew Baxter's comment on LinkedIn, which I thought was, it certainly was provocative and made me think. "This is definitely not how to run a railroad," Andrew Baxter writes, "unless your real goal is to destroy the entire transportation system. This process is in no way connected to a good-faith effort to improve federal government efficiency. The Federal Executive Institute saga is but one of tens of thousands of similar circumstances occurring across the country under the smokescreen of Department of Government Efficiency. FEI, the National Fire Academy, HIN funding, remember HIN funding, it'll come up later in the show, folks. Baxter continues, "HIN funding, FEMA firing thousands of military officers, we are witnessing the intentional deconstruction, destruction of our republic one foundational block at a time. Rule of law, power of Congress to appropriate federal dollars, overt politicization of the DOD, the DOG, the DOJ, the DO, fill in the blank." Remember, the Department of Justice has issued a letter to UVA saying, "If you don't crush diversity, equity, and inclusion by a set date, we're not gonna give you any federal funding anymore." So he's using the DOJ. Baxter continues, "A permanent get-out-of-jail-free card from the Supremes, executive overreach on a scale not seen since we broke up with King George III, massive intentional income and wealth disparity, free airplanes from Qatar," that happened yesterday. There's a saying in the emergency management world that all disasters start local and end local. The same is true of what is now happening at a national scale. It will only end when enough local folks say, "No more" at the ballot box, if not in the streets. Baxter leaving that comment, and Baxter's got a lot of street cred in this community, ladies and gentlemen. You're talking the, 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 what, the one-time fire chief, right? The fire chief of the Charlottesville Fire Department for nearly five years, Andrew Baxter, leaving that comment on the I Love Seaville Network yesterday. Now, I am not gonna go that far with the comment, to that far, but I will say that you're starting to see, like, a lot of, like, I don't wanna call them coincidences, but a, a, a string of, like, I don't wanna call them red flags, but certainly a, a cacophony of disruptive behaviors or situations. I'm gonna try to outline the cacophony of destruction. The dominoes of destruction. The dominoes of destruction and doom. Here's the dominoes of destruction and doom locally, off the top of my head, as it applies to the Trump administration. You, you are seeing the University of Virginia completely reimagined right now. Whether you think it's good or whether you think it's bad, that's up to you to decide, okay? I'm not gonna have an opinion on that. Do we think the federal government should be able to reimagine or remodel or re-renovate a, a, a state public university? I have beef with that. Do I think the University of Virginia needed to do some things significantly differently? Absolutely. Was there too much fat on the payroll tied to administrators? Was there too much focus on politics and politicizing higher education? Absolutely. Is the University of Virginia a bastion or playground of 1% student body? Absolutely. Has it gotten so outlandishly expensive to attend the University of Virginia that upper, upper-middle-class students and their families can no longer consider it? Absolutely. Has DEI and have politics and have the collateral damage of DEI and politics convoluted the mission and the vision of the University of Virginia? Absolutely. Do I recognize the University of Virginia today and compared to what it was 25 years ago when I first attended as a first year as an 18-year-old from Williamsburg, Virginia? Hell, no, I do not. But the issue I have is a federal government, a presidential administration, having this kind of impact on a state or Commonwealth level on its flagship school. That seems like overreach to me. So the first domino in this domino of doom and destruction is Trump's administration going to Virginia local level to reconstruct it in the eyes that he sees best. Utilizing the DOJ, utilizing federal funding as leverage, threats, whether legitimate or empty, I think they're frankly very legitimate. We see an article in the Cavalier Daily, it's gonna come up later in the show, came out yesterday, that the University of Virginia has lost more than $60 million in federal research cuts. The Trump administration right now is trying to revolutionize Medicaid and Medicare. And if the Trump administration gets what they want with Medicaid and Medicare, UVA Health and hospital systems across the Commonwealth and the country are in absolute vulnerable ground. Extremely vulnerable ground. If what Trump's administration with Medicare and Medicaid becomes a reality, UVA Health will lay people off and there will be salary cuts, folks. Without question. So that's where you could kinda start with the doom, the dominoes of doom and destruction. There's a good starting point for you. Another starting point for the dominoes of doom and destruction locally is the vulnerability felt with folks in the second driver of the local economy. The first driver of the local economy, the University of Virginia. The second driver of the local economy, the government sector. The spies, the defense sector, government contracting. Good night, you talk to someone that works in the government contracting sector locally here in Charlottesville, and goodness gracious, great balls of fire, they're saying their job status is very vulnerable. They're RTO-ing back to DC, return to office. They're having cuts galore. They're not sure if they have a future in what they do anymore. Second domino of doom and destruction locally. Third domino of doom and destruction? Is it the FEI? Is it the Federal Executive Institute? We're in a 90-day period of time, an institute that's been around for generations on Emmett Street, goes from active to executive-ordered shuttered, to everyone working there terminated, to the building being given to anyone who fills out an application that the Trump administration sees as the best pick, to then given to city schools, to then have the city schools reneged upon, to then given to the University of Virginia, domino of doom and destruction, beef created between UVA and city schools on graduation weekend, parents coming in on graduation weekend with a couple of hundred indivisible Charlottesville and teacher-union employees with signs up saying, "Trump steals children." "UVA steals children," excuse me. "UVA steals from children." Tomorrow, 5:30 PM. That's a movie script. That is a documentary. That is a documentary. And I'm gonna ask you again, viewer and listener, in your time in Charlottesville, can you think of a more divisive turn of events between city schools and the University of Virginia than FEI? Uh, uh, such a divisive turn of events that the teachers' union and the school board are at fisticuffs perception-wise? And the University of Virginia and the school system are at fisticuffs in real life? Comments, put up in the feed. I will relay them live on air. Judah, thoughts with you first, before we go to comments?
I mean, that's certainly, that's certainly an interesting theory. Um, and I'd be interested in hearing more about what, uh, what you think, um, what you think he gains by dividing...
Power.
Power?
It's power.
How so?
When you, when you as either a, um, genuine leader or a, uh, uh, jaded leader, uh, an altruistic or corrupt leader, whether you're, uh, dark triad in pers- personality or you're Machiavellian and your approach to life, when you're able to size up people, individuals, groups, small, groups, medium, groups, large, and you're able to, to single-handedly deconstruct social and human behavior and reconstruct social and human behavior in ways that you want, that is power. And some individuals chase the currency of power even more so than chasing the currency of, of, of
Currency.
Money.
Yeah.
Like, CEO Craig Kent, UVA Health System. Ladies and gentlemen, someone should do a Freedom of Information Act request into Craig Kent and how much money he was given to walk away. Resign and take a package, a bag of money. It would shock the world how much money Craig Kent got just to offer his resignation, the CEO of UVA Health, in the face of a cloud of corruption. Facing a cloud of corruption, just to walk away. But for a man like him to have, to, to offer his resignation, he gets a bag of money, but he loses his most important currency?
Right.
Which is his power. That is, that should never be under, underappreciated.
Underemphasized.
Yeah. Let's go to, uh, John Blair. We'll go to Deep Throat. Got comments coming in left and right. First, John Blair says, "God bless that child's soul in Croze, amen, brother." He's a father, John Blair. Deep Throat's a father of two. John Blair's a father of one, I'm a father of two. All of us have boys. That really shook me.
When I was driving home last, yesterday, I, I saw, uh, I saw an ambulance pulling, pulling rafts and, uh, kinda caught me by surprise, and then I got home and I, and I saw something about a, a missing child. And I put two and two together, and it was very, very sad to find out this morning that, uh, that they weren't successful.
John Blair says, "It's not quite UVA versus the city, but do you recall the uproar in 2013, 2014 with the ABC incidents and UVA students? There was the issue at the Krogers at Barracks, and then a UVA kid got falsely arrested on the corner by an ABC agent. I'm pretty sure these incidents both occurred in the same year. Also, in the 1980s, there was an enormous drug bust of a frat house by Charlottesville Police Department. That was a pretty big uproar as well." I think that 80s drug bust, was that Jade? I think that was Jade. I remember hearing about the drug bust. And yes, he's absolutely right. Um, the ABC agents, uh, alcohol beverage control got some underage kids coming out of the Kroger in Barracks Row with, like, some Beast Light, some Bush Light, some Milwaukee's Beast Light, some Natty Light, some racks and cases of them, and literally took the kids that were coming out with the beers and slammed them on the hood of their car. And that also coincided with the kid on the corner trying to get into a bar with the fake ID, thrown to the ground and bloodied.
Wow.
And that kind of, uh, positioned, uh, a, a, uh, a narrative that the Commonwealth was stepping out of bounds with UVA students and really created an uproar. What I, and I appreciate that, I, I, I remember those vividly, John, when I, when I was working in legacy media. That was, uh... No, that was after I was working in legacy media and self-employed at the time. What I'm specifically looking for is, can anyone remember a turn of events with UVA and city schools specifically being more divided? Right now, the teachers' union is threatening the University of Virginia and saying, "We won't host your students anymore" for them to log classroom hours on their way to a degree. Uh, Deep Throat says, he pushes back on this a little bit. Uh, he says, "I do not think that the FEI thing made it up to Trump." His words. "But be assured that any political appointee in this administration is very familiar with the code word Charlottesville and probably does not feel warm and fuzzy towards the town. And people in this administration may just want to mess with those they perceive as their enemies. So just mess with Charlottesville 'cause the schools and UVA to fight with, and get the schools and UVA to fight with each other." After all, and he has a joke here, "There are very fine people on both sides of the, of, of the debate. Am I right?" Deep Throat says. Didn't Cooch, Ken Cuccinelli? What was his role with Trump? UVA Board of Visitors appointee, Ken Cuccinelli.
He was a...
He served as Acting Deputy Secretary of Homeland Security from 2019 to 2021. He's a Republican. Served in the Virginia State Senate. Attorney General of Virginia. Cooch had a role under Trump. Cuccinelli was appointed as member of the White House Corona Task Force. Alright.
He was Acting USCIS Director.
I'll see how tomorrow plays out. At 5:30 PM, graduating parents, the, the parents of graduating students will be driving by a protest of hundreds of people on a 70-degree sunny day with cars illegally parked in federal realty, federal realty-owned Barracks Road Shopping Center. This could be a poop show of tremendous proportions as hundreds of vehicles are towed from a private parking lot while Mercedes-Benz, Lexus BMWs, Expeditions, Tahos, and SUVs sprint down Emmett Street to get to their hotel rooms for cocktail hour as teachers and activists hold signs on the side of the road that says, "UVA steals from children." It's a, it's crazy. Only in Charlottesville, ladies and gentlemen. Only in Charlottesville will you see a picture like that. Someone, Carol Thorpe, are you gonna be on the side of the road with popcorn watching this all play out? Only in Charlottesville. Let's get to the next topic here. This is data dug up by Deep Throat. You set the stage for this data, Judah. And, and, and you can put a graph up. Kevin Yancey, welcome to the broadcast. I'll get to your comments here. Kate Schartz, welcome to the broadcast. Set the stage of what Deep Throat did, so I can catch my breath here.
So, Deep Throat had a, um, let's see, a, um, a, a, a burst of, of inspiration. He had a lightbulb moment and decided to take a look at, uh, the, um, uh, what is it called? LE, I think it's LEHR. And so he took a look in...
LEHD.
LEHD, uh, which is essentially a, a database for, uh, for federal, federal employees and employers. And, uh, through some digging, found information on where the CCPS employees, uh, collect, not collectively, where, where they live. Um, and took a look at the information, uh, with a, uh, with a view towards, uh, proving or disproving that, uh, the, the narrative that CCPS employees have been exiting the area in greater and greater numbers as, uh, as housing affordability has, uh, shifted.
Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll put this succinctly here. I appreciate you setting the table here. You got some graphs that you can put on screen. Okay, before you put on the screen, wait for me to call, wait for me to call for them. LEHD is Longitudinal Employer Household Dynamics.
Yeah.
He utilized data that even he acknowledged took him a while to dig up. This is data clearly that Charlottesville Public Schools does not want out there.
Because they've been asked.
They've been asked for this data and have not provided it. So he decides to do some investigation. Carol Thorpe says, "I'll be there with popcorn. I like mine with extra butter." Carol Thorpe, that's so good. Everyone's been asking public schools in Charlottesville, "Where do your employees live?"
Yeah.
Because the narrative from activists, from elected officials, from the teachers' union, from the school board, is your... is your employees have to commute from Dilwin, from Buckingham, from Lake Monticello, from Waynesboro, from Augusta County, from Greenwood, from Nelson County, from Mineral, because they cannot afford to live in Charlottesville or neighboring Almaro County. And for years, we have all thought that was true. But a deep data dive by Deep Throat suggests otherwise. Number one is on screen. Blue line is Almaro County, red line is City of Charlottesville. Yellow line, what's that jurisdiction, Judah? The yellow line?
Yellow, uh, I believe that's.
Fluvana. The green line, Green County. The orange line, Louisa. What is overwhelmingly where the teachers live? Almaro County and the City of Charlottesville, and it ain't even close. Legacy media that's watching the show, turn this into content for your old media cycles. Judah, put the second graph on screen. Home address of Seville City School employees. Can you put that on screen? This is the bar graph. Is that on screen? 2022 versus 2023, ladies and gentlemen.
2022 versus 2003.
2022 versus 2003. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for holding me accountable there.
19 years and we actually see an uptick.
Very good. Thank you very much, Judah, for holding me accountable. 2022 versus 2003. There's been an uptick of employees living in Almaro County and the City of Charlottesville over the last 19 years. An increase in city school employees living in Almaro County and Charlottesville over the last 19 years. Look at the data. Look at the data. We have another graph that we can put on screen, do we not, Judah?
Give me a second.
The other graph that we're going to put on screen is, God, Deep Throat, this is just compelling data. You, you would have made, I sense, I mean frankly, you would have been good at a, a lot of lines of, a lot of work, okay? You've been good a lot of different lines of work. You very much would have made an excellent investigative journalist. I sincerely mean that. The third, the next graph, do we have that on screen?
Just about.
I'm about to show you Charlottesville and Almaro County by detail. He's broken it down by district. He's broken it down by district. Look at the screen. This is 2022 blue versus 2003 red by district in Almaro County. Jack Jewitt is my district, the Ivy District. It's dropped, yes. All other districts, however, have remained flat or increased. That means an influx of people into Almaro County that work at Charlottesville City Schools. We have a narrative from activists that school, city, employees can't afford to live here. And that narrative has been used as foundational arguments for the teachers' union, as foundational arguments to secure more funding from the city and taxpayers. A narrative used to ask taxpayers to offer more from their bank accounts and their wallets to the city so that in turn can go to the, oh, we can't afford to live here in Charlottesville and Almaro County employee base. And it appears that narrative is a smokescreen. Three-card Monte in Midtown Manhattan. He says this, "You want to know another funny thing I found in this data? Almaro County Public Schools has the same LEHD bug. All the employees are showing as being at 401 McIntyre Road. So you have like 3,000 fake commuters showing up in the data. They work in the county in actuality." And the crazy thing is this, I think teachers are underpaid. Teachers should be paid more. I want the teachers of Charlottesville City Schools to hear this. You should be paid more. Your heroes, you should be paid more. However, the folks that are weaving the narrative of disingenuous, disingenuous tactics to weave this narrative should be held accountable. The narrative is, poor teachers can't live in the city or Almaro County. That's not the case. Instead, the platform should be, we live in Charlottesville and Almaro County because we want to support and live in the jurisdictions that we serve so we can watch the students we teach grow up and mature so we can be next to them to help them mature. The narrative should be, look at what we're being paid compared to incomes of other lines of work. It's how they went about doing this. It's, it gets back to the teachers' union, how they went back, how they went around, how they went about managing the Federal Executive Institute loss, where they threaten UVA and saying, "We're threatening you. You can't use your teachers in our schools anymore." UVA can't give them the Federal Executive Institute by letter in the contract. By the contract, they can't do that. And if you had any comments.
And even if they could, they don't even have it yet.
Exactly.
So to be angry, not to mention, are we going to say hateful?
To threaten them.
Libelous?
To, to threaten them.
You mentioned libel.
If they give in to threats like that, it's like giving candy at bedtime to your two-and-a-half-year-old son on a Monday. On a Tuesday, your two-and-a-half-year-old son is going to want a candy at bedtime.
It's also a mirror of what we as a country won't do with, with enemy states who take hostages of our, of our citizens.
Jason Noble says, "Deep Throat, that's amazing and would love to see the data from 2022 to 2025." Kevin Yancy in Waynesboro says, "Now dig deeper and see how many are on assistance in Almaro and the city." Kev, are you, are you, do you, do you really think that these teachers are on housing assistance, living in the city or Almaro County? The reality is that these teachers that are living in the city and Almaro County probably have a partner in the household that are also working.
I would imagine that's the case for a lot of them.
That's what it is, Kev. It's not that they're on voucher assistance or any kind of housing assistance. They got another partner that's probably clocking either their same pay or some kind of comparable pay, maybe more pay. And that's how they're ahead of median family household income of $125,800. I got a 130 conference call. It's 136. I haven't called yet. Nuts, 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 nuts. All right. Carly Wagner says, "Is that cutting off your nose to spite your face threatening UVA that way?" I said yesterday, the, the, the students at UVA are going to find a place to log their classroom hours. They're just going to go to private schools or some other public school jurisdiction and do it, which will weaken Charlottesville Public Schools.
Because they'll have less assistance, free assistance, right? Does Charlottesville pay these students anything?
No.
I highly doubt it.
No. They just got super-educated kids to come in their classrooms and give them some more intel. Help the kids out.
Give them help.
Yeah, they're just going to go to another school system. Bananas. All right, I got to go make some money. It's 137. Some of these topics we're not going to get to and I'm seeing my phone ring and I want to close this deal. I hope to God they don't need a wet signature for me to close this deal and I can DocuSign. The, the days of needing a wet signature to close deals is just so archaic. What am I, Fred Flintstone, using my feet to propel my car around Charlottesville? My legs? Wet signatures instead of DocuSigns. Give me a break. It's the Tues, no, today's Wednesday, the Wednesday, May 14th edition. I think I have to go to a lawyer's office to offer a wet signature right now. Thank you kindly for joining us, Judah Wickhauer, Jerry Miller. So long, everybody.